Okay.
Next.
I'm sitting in.
Yes, boss. Next item. Voice President Petrie call. Next item is the other discussion item, Promise Zone. Dr. Gomeliko?
Dr. Mosellin will be up here.
Well, I'm back. Okay, so, um, this is to discuss and review the Promise Zone legislation and to seek board and public input questions, as well as to seek board approval to apply for the Department of Treasury to be a potential promise zone. So, basically, what I'm gonna go through is a quick description of what the promise zone is, how a promise zone is determined, how a promise zone is funded, and why we, as the city of Dearborn, and the Dearborn Public Schools, are eligible to apply to be a promise zone. So, according to Public Act 549, basically means that an eligible entity, which is a city township county or local school district, um, has a percentage of families under the age of eighteen who are living at or below poverty level that is above the state average. Currently, the state average of children living under the age of eighteen is twenty-two point eight percent are living under poverty level. According to the American Community Survey, which is part of the US Census Bureau, Dearborn Public Schools, and the links to these where this information was found is in the power board. The city of Dearborn currently has forty-one point seven percent of its children under the age of eighteen who are living at or below the poverty level. Therefore, that makes the city of Dearborn and the Dearborn Public Schools eligible to apply for the promise zone designation. History, the promise zone, real quick. Two thousand nine, Governor Grant Holmes signed it to law, the establishment of ten promise zones. Two thousand seventeen, Governor Sider in Public Act one fifty, expanded that to fifteen promise zones. These are the current promise zones in the state of Michigan. The bottom three, um, the last three listed, I apologize, the last three listed, Grand Rapids Public Schools, Covert Public Schools, and River Rouge Public Schools, were basically on a waiting list. There were three spots open, they applied, they got in. These three areas are not, right now, a promise zone, they're going through the application stage. So, they're going, they've been approved, uh, to apply, they've applied, and they're going through the process. So, this does take up to fifteen current slots. So, the question might be, then, why are we here? The reason why we're here is because there could be potential and a possibility that in the future, additional slots may open. Currently, the way it has worked with the Department of Treasury is that districts or schools such as us that apply, if we apply, we then are put on a list, and we would be next up if more promise zones are approved. So, it's just being proactive.
Good.
We sent out our official notice as required by law on September sixteenth. It was published in the Dearborn Press and Guide and the Dearborn Times-Herald. So, a description of a promise zone. Well, basically, there are three ways, there are three aspects in, uh, funding a promise zone. Number one, Michigan education tax capture, um, for the designated promise zone. Currently, Dearborn Public Schools, based on an estimate, again, I'm speaking in estimates, an estimate from last year, we would have captured ninety-six thousand dollars that would come back to the district to go towards promise zone funding for tuition. Additionally, what the promise zone does is it guarantees a hundred percent tuition-free associate's degree, or equivalent of that with our partner, Henry Ford College. The second phase would be every student, I'm sorry.
So, we'd have to pick a partner?
Yes, and, and, and it would be Henry Ford College because...
Of course.
Exactly. Not trying to play favorites, but, you know.
Because...
The other, uh, the other places have a partner also, like Covert, for example? They must have their local community college?
Correct. Correct. If I may go back a step, I'll give you an example. Kalamazoo Public Schools, everyone's heard of the Kalamazoo promise. When the Kalamazoo Public Schools established the Kalamazoo promise, it started with the local community college. As years went on, and they started putting more, they were starting getting more and more donations, and I'll speak about that next, and more and more students were going through the pipeline, they now have extended, extended it to four-year universities. So, in time, you can expand. But all, most promise zones, and I don't wanna say all, because I don't wanna give an absolute, but I know that most promise zones start with one small partner, and then build from there. At this point, according to, um, the individuals that I have been speaking with through my research, none of the promise zones that were approved from this point have defaulted. They, they're still promise zones. So, they've had much success. The second part of the finances is every student in the Dearborn Public Schools, now, oh, I, I need to add this, and I do apologize, this isn't just for Dearborn Public School students. This is for any student who resides in the Dearborn Public Schools boundaries. Therefore, it is for private as well as public schools. So, if a child goes to Divine Child, they are eligible with the promise zone.
Or a charter school?
Uh, charter school may not be.
Oh.
I have to find, I, I wanna go on the record, yeah, I wanna go on the record to, I would need to clarify that a char, whether or not a charter school qualifies. But I do know public and private, public, as different public schools does qualify, but I need to verify if charter schools are, are, are part of that. And, so, every high school student has to complete the FAFSA, and then through private donations. Those are the three ways that it is funded. Now, I will talk about the development of a board in a moment, but if we apply and were approved through the Department of Treasury to move forward and develop a plan, we would then have to put together, um, an eleven-member authority board. This eleven-member authority board would include, um, one member who, off from the, off from Dearborn, they would have to be, they would have to be residents and/or living in the Dearborn Public Schools boundaries. One member would be selected by the House of Representatives, one member would be selected by the Senate Majority Leader, the other nine members would be selected by the community from this forum. There, the, the, the two areas that are mandated are, have an asterisk, must be a graduate from a public or private high school in the Dearborn Public Schools boundary area, as I stated, as of a certain date. So, when, so that when it's, when the eleven board member comes together, based on when our application is approved, and based on, um, when we are approved to be a promise zone, then we would establish that date. So, that would be something that would be established at a later time. The other, uh, piece is, it, all students must complete the FAFSA and exhaust needs based on aid. And then, these other areas could be tentative criteria that the board would want to look at. Level financial assistance can be based on number of years of attendance. That's a key thing. You know, there are some private promise zones where you had to attend within that boundary four years to get a hundred percent tuition. Three years got you seventy-five percent, two years got you fifty percent, one year got you twenty-five percent. That is an option, but these are things that the authority board would determine. And it's all written in the law. Everything I've taken here is, is directly from the statute. So, I wanna thank Dr. Michael Nealan, Chris Bozinski, Lori Yonko, and Kethi Dimitru, as they helped me attain this information that I'm there to show. Currently, Henry Ford College, um, this is their, uh, their, this is their Pell Grant awardees. As you see here, the average for Dearborn, the city residents in Dearborn that attend Henry Ford, the average Pell Grant award is five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Now, I wanna make something clear, though. That fifty-three sixty-eight is approximately, this is, these are all approximates again, is approximately twenty-three hundred dollars more than it costs to go full-time for one year. So, you can't take into consideration that other twenty-three hundred dollars towards reducing the cost for the promise zone. We have to be very careful with those numbers. But this just gives you a nice estimate of what our students that live in the city of Dearborn get on Pell Grants. This here illustrates what they get on the, in the Michigan TIP grant, and, again, it's twenty-five hundred and thirteen dollars is the estimated amount for our students. And then, I added this slide here because I think it's important, because if we do move forward with the promise zone, this is gonna help Henry Ford College obtain, retain, and push more students to get an associate's degree. I mean, if you look at all Dearborn students from the two thousand fourteen cohort, um, you have fifteen percent of them earning associates, and then thirty-nine percent of them transfer to a four-year university. The reason why I wanted to show this slide, because I believe the potential is there to grow these numbers.
Is that after two years or after one year?
Them being at Henry Ford?
This is the two thousand fourteen cohort, so this is based on three years.
So, within three years of them starting college, then they've transferred?
Yes.
Okay, stayed, okay.
Yes. And I use the late, the, the furthest data just to show that long-term, that long-term trend. So, the tax capture, how does that work? Basically, the promise zone may capture half of the growth in state education tax revenues from within its borders that have occurred since the zone's base year. So, when Tom Wall helped us out on this, we identified that if we were to capture last year, it would be ninety-six thousand dollars would go towards the promise zone. So, these numbers are approximate. I did not, um, base these numbers off of billable credits. This is just taking how much it costs a Dearborn resident to go to Henry Ford College and finish one full year. So, you're looking at sixty credit hours, which would be close to an associate's degree and/or an associate's degree, it's about seven thousand eight hundred dollars for a city resident. These are estimates. This is just tuition. This doesn't include books, it doesn't include, um, travel expenses, doesn't include living expenses. So, when you take this information, this is where the numbers get a little big. We took an estimate of five hundred students to complete twenty-four credit hours, which would cost those five, total one point five six million dollars. According to the numbers that we have, fifty-three percent of the students currently enrolled that are city of Dearborn residents get Pell Grant, twelve percent of the students that currently enroll at Henry Ford College get M-Tip Grant. That's the amount of money that is awarded to our students, three point nine seven five million in Pell, four hundred and fifty thousand to M-Tip, based on five hundred students. Estimated tax recapture of ninety-six thousand. So, the big number that everybody needs to know is that if we were to move forward with the promise zone, the big component to be a promise zone is donations. The tax capture and FAFSA's only going to cover, and FAFSA alone, we estimated that, and this is a, I wanna say it correctly, this is a low-ball estimation of fifty percent, but a high-ball estimation of donations. It is estimated that if fifty percent of the tuition is covered by M-Tip and Pell, we would have to raise seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to cover the tuition one hundred percent. But that is a high-ball estimate. We, we looked at the averages across the state, and what's happening in the different promise zones, and we found that fifty percent is a low-ball estimate, where there's a possibility that we could cover seventy-five percent. But we wanted to low-ball the estimate, and then later on, if we did go this process, and we see that number go down, it's like the early birthday gift present. You know, we wanna prepare everyone for worst-case scenario. So, according to Public Act five forty-nine, we, we submit, this is, this is our public hearing, we submitted the notification, um, we have thirty days after today, clock starts counting once we've finished this meeting, to make a determination if we are to, well, we have to submit an application within thirty days from today. If we submit an application, it'll be a first-come, first-served. I already spoke about the eleven-member team, and I also bring up real quick that the promise zone authority could assign a CEO of the authority and pay a CEO of the authority, but that's something, long-term, to worry about, it's another point, but I had to mention that. And, so, basically, the process now is if we are to move forward and agree to apply, again, I want to reiterate, if the board chooses so, to move forward and to apply, it does not, uh, tie us into moving to the next step. What the application does is it puts our spot in line. If our spot in line gets called, we then will have, um, about one year to put the authority board together, and then we have two years to complete the entire process, but our, but we have to do it within five years. So, they give you time to build your authority board, they give you time to build your process, they give you time to identify how much funds you need, and if we do apply, and our spot in line is called, and we do put the authority board together, then the state, Department of Treasury will work with us, Henry Ford College, Mr. Wall, who controls our books, on identifying exactly, very close, I shouldn't say exactly, but very close, what our numbers would be, and how much we would have to reach out for donations.
Where are you with the, with the application at this time?
This is it.
Are you ready to apply immediately?
If the board gives us approval, then I will work with, um, our consultant, and he will come out and work with the team, and he's willing to, uh, discuss with any board members the next steps in the application process. We haven't looked at the application at this point, no.
Oh. So, we only have thirty days to apply, correct?
We have to apply.
So, how long would it take with the consultant and everything to get the application submitted?
You're looking at seven to ten days.
So, if we wait till the next board member to be set, board meeting, it would be seven to day, seven to ten days after that?
No, it would be...
You need it tonight.
It would be thirty days from today, because this is the official hearing. Now, if I was to come back and discuss this next week, let's say, it would still be thirty days from now, because this is our official hearing date.
So, you're saying we have another week?
Yeah, why does this become our official hearing day when this is the first we've heard of it?
We, we spoke about it last meeting.
Well, not to the detail that we're getting today. It was just, we wanted to look at it.
Think our clock would've started then?
Yeah, I understand that, I understand. I didn't realize we were gonna be required to make a commitment one way or other day, I, you know.
Well, this is just to put in an application. If we decide we don't wanna do it later, you can pull the application.
We don't need to make a decision today, 'cause we've got the benefit of having a meeting next week.
Correct.
True. I'd like, Dr. Mead, if you would put it on the agenda for the college, because it directly benefits Henry Ford College.
Good point.
Mr. Cavallino, would you make sure it's on the agenda? Thank you, sir. Trustee Lane.
It really breaks my heart to see that almost a quarter of the children in the United States are in poverty. Twenty-three percent of the greatest country in the world has children in poverty. That ought to make everybody feel ashamed. I thought we were great again. Anyways, that being said, and, and then to, to see forty-two percent of our students in Dearborn, um, and we know students in poverty are, are, are more expensive and to educate, but, in any case, the Policy Committee was thrilled with this whole idea. It, it's a real promise. When we all heard about it years ago at Kalamazoo, I know from my part, I was drooling, thinking this would be fabulous. I remember our past Superintendent Brian Wiston always hoping that we could do something like this for Dearborn. It's, it's a jewel out there for every Dearborn student. It's the motivation that every student needs. And I've seen students that my kids went to school with, who, once they saw a football scholarship out there possible, they said, "Oh gee, I wish I would've done better in math class." You know, once they see it's a reality for them, uh, they're, they're much more motivated. I know Trustee Nasser was really thrilled when she heard about this, and I know it's something that she wants to work on in the future, and, uh, I think that she'd be, she, she's, uh, really committed to it, and I appreciate that. But I know all, all three of us on the committee were, were really thrilled. I'm, I'm really excited about it. So, I would like, I heartily endorse it myself. I think it's something that we should do for our students. I would like to throw out for consideration that not only should the district work on it, Henry Ford College and Henry Ford College Foundation should work on it as well, because it has direct impact to them, guarantees them the raw materials, so to speak, that they need.
Well, I certainly do endorse it also, but I'm wondering if everybody needs at least another week before we vote on it. Trustee Hamid?
I, I also, I, I echo Trustee Lane's comments, like you as well, I, I definitely endorse this, and I constantly welcome the opportunity to provide opportunities, right, for our students.
Right.
And, uh, this is, this is great. Um, I don't know if the application, how, how long it will take, and so on, you said seven days. Hope, hopefully, it won't take too long by next week. You know, I do think that this is a great opportunity. I do have a quick question, though, um, and I saw the city of Detroit on there as being a promise zone. Can the city of Detroit have more than one partner? Which means, can Henry Ford be a partner to the city of Detroit as well? And is that a different process, or do we just have to talk to the city of Detroit?
Excellent question. No. A, a college can have multiple partners, and a municipality or city can have multiple partners. There is no limit on the number of partners that you have. So, currently, students from Detroit that are part of the promise zone do go to Henry Ford College. If Dearborn does become a promise zone, we would just add to that mix. So, there is no conflict, and it doesn't change. And one thing I will say is, if you give, you know, if, if I need to work on this day and night, I'll work on it day and night, and I'll try to add time to the evening to make sure it gets done on time. So, I assure you, I won't let this slide, no matter what timeframe we're in. I give you that in my promise. I, 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 I'll mind, well.
I just wanted to talk briefly, 'cause the tax capture, if you're not familiar, it's called a TIFA, which is a Tax Incremental Finance Authority. So, the, the bar starts of the, the, the year you actually implement, and then every year after that, as an example, if we did it last year, just for round number seven ninety, we'll do a hundred thousand dollars. If the tax base in the whole district of the, the school district goes up again, another hundred thousand, so that's two hundred thousand dollars annually to the program. So, you can see where, over time, the taxes captured keep growing, and that then becomes a much more affordable, and you're not just looking at much for donations. So, that's how a Tax Incremental Finance Authority works.
So, it's my understanding right now, even when we put an application in, we're not committed to anything. All we're doing is holding our place in line.
Right.
And, so, later on, yeah. So, you know, and there are possibly other districts out there trying to hold their place in line, too.
Right.
So, time is up there, and if somebody submits a day before we do, you know, they could be taken. I, I don't know if they are, but I think that that's important to consider.
Trustee Petrie, let's call.
Um, I'm just, because I really don't understand how this all works, and I wasn't in the meeting to hear the details in a different way. So, this is the first time I'm really looking at this. So, I'm trying to understand, A, is this one, once, if we were to ever get it and be approved, is this ad infiniti, I mean, is it, that's it? We're, we, moving forward, we would just be part of a promise zone for how ever long we exist?
We would be a promise zone as long as the authority board identifies that we have the finances to continue offering a hundred percent tuition for it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what I'm trying to wrap my mind around. When we say we have to have a certain amount of funds, is that to, we've, we're identifying and capping the amount of students that would be able to, or we're saying we have to have that amount of funds for this many graduates that year?
Correct. So, when I used the estimate of five hundred...
I was gonna say, 'cause five hundred is not what our graduate numbers are.
Right, right now at Henry Ford...
To just go to the one, but if we were to expand...
To other colleges?
To other...
Yeah, that would be something that we would do down the line, if our authority board sees that we have enough revenues to expand our program.
But what, okay, so, we're saying right now it's a rough estimate, right? Because we're basing it upon what we know right today. So, we make this opportunity available, we get this, and instead of five hundred students, all of a sudden, we got a thousand kids who are saying, "We wanna jump on board," but we've only got the finances to cover five hundred students. What do we do then?
So, that's a great question. So, when we look at it, when we, you, this is assuming that only fifty percent of the Pell and M-Tip grant is gonna be used. But when we have more students who are gonna attend Henry Ford, these are usually students who are receiving the Pell or TIP grant, because they're not getting scholarship funds to go to other universities. And a lot of these students are at that point. Currently, at Henry Ford, based on the data that I have as an estimate, there are three thousand three hundred students that are in-city residents. You take, and that's, that's, um, that are in-city residents, but have been there for multiple years. So, when we looked at the, the three comprehensive high schools, and you say you're graduating fifteen hundred students from the three comprehensive high schools, we took the estimate that five hundred of those, fifteen hundred, plus some other students from other, other high schools in the area, are gonna go to Henry Ford. If we get more students that go to Henry Ford, we're also gonna get more Pell and TIP grant money coming in.
Do we know that they would all qualify for the Pell and TIP grant? What if the, what if we have students who say, "Hey, I, I wanna free college education, but I don't qualify"? Do they have to qualify in order to get the...
They have to qualify, and they have to apply for the FAFSA in order to be considered for the promise zone.
Okay.
So, if, if, if I wanna attend Henry Ford College, I cannot qualify for the promise zone unless I submit my FAFSA. And that will be a, be a major movement that we'd have to have within our high schools, that every student in our high schools completes the FAFSA.
So, this isn't for a student who couldn't have the wherewithal otherwise, some other way? That's what I wanna understand.
Are you really saying that? What if a, a student submits their FAFSA, but then they're not eligible?
So, if you have two students, one submits their FAFSA and they're eligible, their tuition is covered through their Pell and TIP grant.
Right.
Not through the promise zone. Student B, who submits their FAFSA, and they're not eligible, they're covered through the promise zone.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the answer to your question.
So, we use...
One of them.
We use the fifty percent estimate to give us a high number in donations, 'cause we think it's gonna be more than fifty percent.
So, this is really beneficial to the students who don't get full coverage from financial aid? They're the students that don't qualify, their parents make too much money to qualify for financial aid?
Right.
But not enough money to completely cover, or even if they do make, make too much money, um, everybody's covered.
Yeah, so, both are eligible.
Yeah, that, that is what I'm asking. They are both eligible.
They're both eligible.
They're both eligible, but only one is going to receive promise zone funding, because they're not covered through the grants, through the TIP.
So, if they're covered through the grants, they get the grant money, not the promise zone?
Correct.
And as you see, the average is fi, it's, it, you're looking at the average of about five thousand dollars for the Pell, which, again, is two thousand dollars more approximate than what it costs for a full two semesters at Henry Ford. So, those students actually can get additional money for living expenses.
Trustee Thorpe, the last one, and, and, not the last one, but we have to extend the meeting, so...
You got time, well, I gotta, I got your...
You're on it?
He's on it, okay.
This'll be quick, so, with the estimates that you gave, um, we're saying approximate need for private donations of seven hundred and eighty thousand. So, what you're saying, then, is that could be annually. We need to come up with that amount.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Trustee Barry?
Mr. Walls, a big question here. Is there a financial commitment applying on our part?
On the district's part?
Yes.
No, because there's a separate entity, the board, that overtakes this aspect. The, the, the money they're capturing is actually the state six mils, which actually goes to the school aid fund, so it doesn't affect our funding as a...
So, the only commitment on our part is the time to put this application in.
Correct.
I, I don't think we need to wait till next week. I'm gonna go ahead and offer a motion to give permission to the team to go ahead and submit the application, knowing that if we, if this goes through, they'll give us, I mean, we don't have to jump on board.
I'll second it.
If we ever, if we ever find...
I was waiting for...
Oh, did you wanna do that?
Just Dr. Mead, let me finish my statement.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I heard the...
So, yeah, no, no, I know, I know, so, I'm gonna give it a chance to record here.
Okay.
So, yeah, I offer that motion.
I second.
Good. Although, they need discussion. Yes, sir. Trustee Thorpe.
So, what drawbacks are there for us moving forward with this, now we're in the future? We've gotta come up with funding it somehow. We don't, the authority does, right?
The authority board. The, the only drawback, which is a big drawback, is if we're not able to raise the funds through donations, based on how much we need to raise in donations to cover what the Pell, TIP grant, and tax capture does not cover. That is the only major drawback. The authority board will put, will have to put together a plan on how to do that, and again, working with the Dearborn Foundation, the Henry Ford College Foundation, all of our partners, and going forward. Now, the only other drawback is, um, if we apply, and we have to sit and wait to see if another slot is approved.
But we're not talking about any type of tax increase or mileage, or anything more on our taxpayers.
Or any penalty if we don't.
And, we're not talking about money leaving the college. Colleges are dropping their cost for this.
No.
So, we're still supporting the college as well.
And so, the drawback, if they, if we, they don't raise it, what's the penalty, then?
So, there is no penalty, so, let, let...
Students just don't get the... Students just don't get the go.
Basically, so if, if we move forward, we apply, we get approved, the authority board puts it together and we say, we give a, a, a date, starting graduates from this date will be eligible for promise zone the following year. And we go through the, we raise funds and we don't raise enough funds, where then we can't be a promise zone. And then if we raise those funds, within the authority board, they have to, you know, there is some law that talks about how to, what to do with those funds. And I can't go into detail on that because I don't know that detail. But the worst ca, that's where, um, our consultant, Mr. Charles Wilber, who I've been working through with this process, he's actually one of the individuals that wrote the original law with Governor Granholm. So he's very knowledgeable of this and he's willing to come in and have more discussion as needed as we move forward through the process.
Mr. Secretary, could we extend the meeting, please?
We have to vote on the motion first, we're still legal, I know.
E- even, okay.
No, I mean, is there any other, we have a motion on table.
Are we outside the meeting, though?
We're okay, we're good. There's a motion on table.
Yeah, let's call for a.
Yeah. Any more discussion on the motion?
No. I would just like to make one point. I think that, um, this will reinforce the value of an associate's degree, which people now, we've not pushed that value very much. And people, you know, students don't, don't realize it, they think it's a four-year degree or nothing, but a certificate and an associate's are valuable and this will reinforce that to students.
Good point. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, if unanimous, go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to extend the meeting fifteen minutes.
Please.
Second.
Roll call vote, Hussein Berry, yes. Fadhu Hamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Pachkov?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
President?
Mead. Yes.
Okay.
Just a really quick, I wanted to say really quick, um, the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, he said, is a very high ball estimate. So it could be half a million, it could be four hundred, it could be six, you know? Um, but that gets the, the graduating class through two years, correct? That gets the graduating class through two years?
Through an associate's degree.
Through an associate's, okay.
Or the equivalent of.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Board of Education Business, first item is acknowledgement correspondence.
Well, there was an email that we had all received, I think it was anonymous.
Yes. Was responded to. Anything else? Next item.
Board Member Committee and Organizations Reports.
Trustee Thorpe?
Uh, the Dearborn Education Foundation had a couple of events that were working to build the coffers back up. They had their golf outing a few weeks ago. They have not reported the final numbers, but I do know that it was going to be a better year than the previous year had been. And then just earlier today, the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce, uh, had an event where the Dearborn Education Foundation was a benefactor. And what they said at the event is at least twenty-five hundred dollars will come over to our education foundation from that.
Anything else?
And we are having a city relations committee meeting, I think October seventeenth, at three o'clock at, um, the Dearborn Administration Center.
We went over.
Trustee Barry? What, excuse me?
Oh, sorry, we went over a policy already.
Okay.
Finance report, uh, finance committee met earlier today. Uh, one of the items was the, the new RFP timeline for the food service company. Uh, most likely it'll be stand, starting after the new year. Uh, infrastructure committee, we went over the three methods of, uh, the construction delivery. This is decisions to be made later. Building use guideline, our buildings and our fields and our auditoriums, everything is very, very popular in the community, so, uh, people want to use them. I guess we're, we've been letting them go for very, very cheap, so we have a new guideline that we'll be covering.
Good.
And the, one of the other things was, uh, food trays, we're looking at biodegradable friendly and just plain biodegradable, obviously it's going to come down to money. Most important thing is we're going to probably have to discuss a little bit today is, uh, air conditioning at Salina. Uh, I guess the numbers have been finalized and it's going to be a cost of five hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. You have to build in a fifteen percent, uh, into that, so it takes us to six eighty-seven, seven. AK, AK Steel is still offering the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I did call, I have to disclose, I did get a call from Nasser Baydoun. He's looking for an answer like very quickly at this point. So we need to make a decision, go forward with this or say no to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So our cost would be just over half a million?
Over, yes, well, no, it'd be more than that.
Yeah, seven hundred thousand.
Minus the one seventy-five?
No, no, that's.
No, 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 yeah, minus one seventy-five, the total, the total, the total is, Tom, you're here?
Yes.
Mind Tricare?
Thousand for the project.
For the project itself. That's with the built-in fifteen percent contingency.
Oh, for the whole project, okay, because that originally was.
Taken off that for the district's.
Okay.
That would mean that's one of our buildings out of the way, completely air-conditioned.
All right, is this a motion?
It's a discussion, I mean.
That, that's five hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
How's our budget, Tom, can we do this kind of thing?
Well, what I always say is we always have money, it's how we spend it.
Yeah, of course.
And so what we talked about before is we still have the infrastructure committee coming up with their act, their recommendations to the board on October twenty-ninth of how they see what the priorities are as part of the district too. And so I don't want to speak for the, the infrastructure task force because they haven't completed the process yet, but they, they will give you some information where they think where the financial numbers are and what their priorities are.
What's the timeline for losing the hundred and seventy-five thousand?
I don't think we actually have a deadline.
I mean, he called me as well and he's looking, you know, for an answer because of.
He was looking for an answer yesterday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think, it sounded like it was this year. They're not sure about its budget next year.
So can we have time for the committee to give us a report before we jump?
I don't see why not, but, you know, obviously we're taking a gamble. If they decide not to move forward, then, you know, we're back at square one. We, we've nothing to lose there other than not, we're not gaining one seventy-five.
How much of a gamble?
That's not up to us.
Ah, okay.
That's not up to us.
We can't decide that here.
Okay, that's it for my report.
Okay, next item.
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee Thorpe.
Two items. First, I wanted to address letters that went out to employees. I know it went to the, the teachers about a month ago, I believe, and then to some of the other unions more recently. Uh, it talked about, uh, communication with the board. Uh, it, it appeared to say there's policies in place where you're not able to speak with the board directly. Uh, I just want to make sure everyone knows that that is not the case. Uh, and you are always open to talk to the board members for any concerns that you've got. It's one of the ways that we can continue to have good governance standards for people. Second item I wanted to address was something that I had seen in the Detroit News recently regarding the Michigan, oh, well, the MHSAA that oversees the athletics in the state, and that they are considering adding esports as a sport in the state of Michigan. Uh, a few weeks ago, we attended the Year of Health Celebration with the, uh, the city of Dearborn. If we're doing what we can to try to promote healthy lifestyles in the state of, or in the city of Dearborn, I really hope we don't get to a point where we start considering esports as a sport. If it's a club, fine, um, but I don't want my children intentionally sitting on their couch playing video games with it being a varsity sport at any point in time. Thanks.
Okay.
Just to clarify, um, the comment trustee Thorpe made about the letter, um, what was referred to in the letter was stated to be a policy, but what it is, is it's under the guidelines. It, it is part of the board guidelines for, by the administration. But, um, I just also want to reiterate, we have a policy for a, our protocol of procedure when, um, employees ha, have, and parents as well, ha, have a concern, um, to start at the building level and move their way up the chain of command. At some point, you're, if, if the concern is high enough up, the board is the, um, resource to go to. So it, this guideline is only to ensure that everybody is respected in that, um, line, so that resolutions can be made at the appropriate level and that everybody has an opportunity to resolve their, um, concerns. But at no point does it mean that board members cannot be contacted and, um, with a concern from anyone in the community, be it staff or, um, community member, um, otherwise. So I just want to make sure it's understood that, um, the wording of the letter, um, and this letter has been sent out for, uh, a while now, um, was just, um, a little misleading. Um, probably not intentionally. But that being said, I want everyone to understand that we would like first, any concerns to be addressed with the appropriate individuals before they want to bring it to the board, but the board is always there. That's what we're elected to do, that's our role, to be the final, um, sounding board for, um, issues in our school district.
Trustee Barry?
Quick follow-up on that. Anytime an employee, teacher, parent, pro, anybody contacts me, like trustee Pachkov said, did you talk to your administrator? Did you go to the superintendent? If they went through the channel, proper channel, and they're not satisfied, then yes, of course. You know, we're, we're, we're the last resort, they have to talk to us. Uh, that's all I'm gonna say, I'm gonna stay positive about this. I think those letters are somewhat, you know, morale is down with teachers. Stress is high with teachers right now. I mean, the load that they have, I, those letters, to me, I mean, most, most teachers, this is not my words, this is some of the teachers' words, they feel intimidated. They feel like this is form of intimidation with these letters, so I'm gonna stop right there on this, my comment.
Trustee Lane?
I'd like to offer my congratulations to the Salina community. Uh, in two weekends, they'll be celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary, their centennial. Uh, I have an obligation to be out of town, but, um, I would love to be there, so I'm sorry I can't be there. But, uh, it's an amazing accomplishment and they've, uh, produced thousands of productive citizens, so it's, it's really, uh, a great celebration. Uh, I'd also like to say that this is the last board meeting before the November sixth election. And I'd like to remind everyone to vote on November sixth. And I would like to remind people that there are three proposals on the ballots as well. The first one, I think, is marijuana, the second one is voters, not politicians, and the third one is, um, another assurance of fair voting, uh, the proposal. So, uh, everybody should remember, it's not just the governor, the secretary of state, the attorney general, the humble board of education, uh, and the proposals as well.
And they can get a copy of all that information. I, um, their best bet is the Legal Woman Voters, four-one-one dot org. Will have all of the information available about the, um, ballot proposals and, um, some background information as well.
I would like to add, I don't know exactly how to do this, but I'd like the policy committee perhaps to think about, uh, some kind of a policy relative to anonymous, uh, letters and emails that are sent to the board. Recently, we had an anonymous, uh, uh, email sent to us and it took hours to respond to it, a lot of staff time. Uh, and I think that we should have some kind of a policy about it. And maybe we do already, but I, I don't know if the policy committee should be the ones to take a look at this or how we should go about this.
Thank you, uh, Chairman, we'll take a look at that and we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Then, um, President Cavalluna is going to have an investiture ceremony on the eighteenth of October. And, uh, I would like to have all board members who do attend to come up at the end of the ceremony when we actually officially invest him, so that we're all together and, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do, put our hands up or something and say, you know,
Well, I don't think we ought to put it that way.
You are formally invested, but, uh, is that an acceptable idea to everybody?
We'll, we'll all be there.
Of course. Okay, so, um, next.
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, I have for a motion to, not that we need it, to expand, extend the motion, another fifteen minutes? Extend the meeting?
Okay, everybody.
I sent you a motion.
Okay, roll call vote, Hussein Berry, yes. Fadhu Hamud?
Yes.
Mary Lane?
Yes.
Celia Nasser?
Yes.
Mary Pachkov?
Yes.
James Thorpe?
Yes.
President Mead?
Yes.
Okay. Last comment, I believe, just a follow-up on, I'm sorry.
That is a D, did we do D?
Just a quick comment, I think for Salina, I think we're up to almost seven hundred attendees and most likely it's going to grow at the door. If you need a ticket, I know Nufaila walks around with tickets, so fifteen dollars, okay, next item?
Yes, sir.
Request for information and future agenda items?
Trustee Barry?
I'll be very, very quick. Uh, Dr. Malek, I'd like to get a list of, uh, teachers that have been, as of last year, highly effective, at least five years. And if it's longer, please state that year and on that list, I'd like to see the building too. I personally would like to send out some thank you, I'm sure we all would like to say some, some, somehow, some way, say thank you for being highly effective teacher, six, seven years, whatever. Uh, two more things real quick, uh, I talked to Tom about this, so I'll make it very quick. Uh, high schools and middle schools, cluster programs, I'd like to see what we spend on each student. Tom, we're good? It's gonna take some time, I understand, you know, you've got till next September if you need it, that's okay. And the last one is for, for our current second and third graders, I'd like to know what percentage of the second and third graders started with us at kindergarten level. I'm done.
Trustee Lane?
Uh, Dr. Mead, I, I'm just thinking, um, quickly, uh, in response to trustee Barry's point. Um, and Dr. Malek, I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there's anybody here from HR. I don't know, can we receive that information or is that a personnel, is that personnel information, uh, highly effective status?
If it's not.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I mean, it would be, it would be very nice for the district to send it out, so I don't know.
You can't give it to us, obviously.
So I just wondered about that.
Maybe the, the district.
I don't know whether that's, uh, it's contained within a personnel file, I don't know whether it's protected information or not.
We can look at that. Eventually it does get to the state and actually gets technically, it's supposed to be reported, sometimes they don't.
Yeah, I just wonder, i- is it public information?
When it gets to the state.
Yeah, when it does, but I, since they haven't been consistent though in putting it out there, um, even though they, that's why they said they were tracking that data, so I can look at that.
And I would be okay if we can get it for the district to send just a thank you email, we love you or something.
Trustee Hamud?
I know, already made a request for a doled ed to.
Yes.
Eventually, so. Also, like, just to follow up, I know that we had this discussion in the past in terms of drug awareness in our schools. And I know we wanted to, already working with different partners in the community to educate our children or deal with this war on drugs that were, really has been sweeping the nation. Just kind of wanted an update as to where we're at, what are we doing? Partners that we're working with and so on.
So like a present, a presentation or more of a, a report?
I mean, eventually, hopefully, when it's.
Okay.
When, when we can, when there's enough information there, yes. But for now, at least an update as to what's going on with that project. It doesn't have to be a full presentation.
Trustee Thorpe?
The decision was made a few months ago to take the kids that used to be in the ACE program, move them back into their home high schools. And though we're only at the end of the first card marking, I would like to know, how is that going? Uh, both with the students that would normally have been on a separate campus and then the additional children that are in those classes. I've heard that there's been some changes, there's additional kids in the classes that there used to be. I want to make sure that those kids that are probably more at risk are still getting the attention they need.
Okay. Anybody else? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, October fifteenth, twenty eighteen, Henry Ford College Board of Trustees meeting, seven PM, at the Henry Ford College Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Uh, and Monday, October twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, P two twelve, board study session. We approved it, obviously, so it'll be five o'clock at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchy Boardroom. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Oh, goodie. Then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, that was a.